Now, Sheriff. Open us with a prayer.
Amen to that here. Dear Heavenly Father, let's thank you for this meeting this morning. We ask that you allow us to use our knowledge and our mission to see the better of Harrison County. We ask that you allow us to make it home safe. And we're very thankful for your arrival. These things we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Frasier Rockhead, which is.
Heart over hand, hand over heart, excuse me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, start with the consent agenda. Items one and two been placed on consent agenda. Apparently routine and I'm confident there is still. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Wait a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item three, order approving N-County travel reimbursement for Texas social resources listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item four, order authorizing board present execute cost reimbursement request for Title II coronavirus supplemental funding grant in amount of four thousand four twenty-nine oh three for the heat court. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, discussion. We were, was advised that we had about thirty thousand dollars or thirty-four thousand outstanding in Jackson. Jennifer, do you know anything about that or did we, you called about that? You were out when I called so I talked to Pam about it.
And this is thirty thousand, what?
Thirty-four thousand dollars in court fees that came from the court.
The administrative office of the courts? Yes ma'am, we have received some of that and then after today's claim socket, there's about twenty-eight thousand that we're gonna send off, that I'm gonna send off today. Once I get a copy of the check, it is the last payment for video surveillance equipment for the Second Circuit Court.
Okay, and that was time sensitive is my understanding.
Yes ma'am.
And that's been handled?
It will be mailed off today, once I get back to the office and get a copy of the check. I will submit that with the claim. I'm gonna email it to Jennifer Perez, she is with AOC at the administrative office of the courts. And then we'll mail the original to her.
I got the call from Jackson, so I was, okay. Also, will this four thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and three cents, will that come out of the cares? If that's not time sensitive either?
This is, this is submitting the final reimbursement for these expenditures.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item five, order approving mileage reimbursement for N-County traffic for the following employees as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Consent.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item six, order of G-Kade payment in the amount of two hundred twelve dollars and seventy-six cents for the February procurement card payable from one seven seven three six nine six four one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seven, order approving payment of claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eight, order authorizing issuance of dual-year warrants as listed per certificates and affidavits filed with the county clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item nine, order authorizing change of classification of constables paid from claims to payroll. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second. Uh, why?
Mr. McGannam's.
Well, it's all a result of the audit the IRS conducted on, IRS conducted on Madison County. They consider the county's participation when they pay her share for the employer and also offer insurance that these per, these, these people are considered employees, so they're covered employees, which means that they ruled against Madison County and Madison County had to go back a year with some penalty support. We were notified in January through our payroll software delta and they let us know that the change in this ruling due to the audit in Madison County, all the constables are aware of this, I've met with the constables. They have no problem with this, they only will be paid, or their category will be payroll only. They're not employees, but because of the view that IRS has. The county has a, what they call a social security two eighteen agreement. And when you have that agreement, the IRS and their code considers any pay to these, you know, constables as covered employees. So it really benefits the county in a way that obviously we don't wanna be audited. The way we have always done it was the same as Madison County. We would issue a ten ninety-nine on the fees from private funds for their service of process. That's settled from Justice Court to Harrison County. Then when Harrison County settles to them, you know, the IRS considers that. You can't do both. Can't issue a W-two, which we do for twenty-five hundred dollars each year, which is statutory. And that's, the term of that is called state failed cases. So a constable will be paid for cases that they didn't get paid on. Does that make sense? Where it might have fallen through the cracks. So the state does allow the county to pay the twenty-five hundred. We run that through payroll. We issue a W-two for that and we issue a ten ninety-nine for the fees and they say you cannot do that. And this will, obviously they'll be on the payroll the same way they are now. Once a month, the first meeting of each month for the board supervisors. What's the law that will be paid?
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item ten, order approving amendment number two to the Harrison County ordinance for ambulance service. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eleven, eleven, excuse me. Order authorizing and proving the repair and resurfacing of a portion of DeBee's Road within the cities of Gulfport and Biloxi as per the terms of interlokal government agreements between the cities of Biloxi, Gulfport, Harrison County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion. I wanted to ask you about this. They, it says repair and resurfacing, so that, if we have to do any grinding of the, would this cover this?
Yeah, that would be included.
Okay, thank you.
That's part of the repairs.
Because it's gonna have to be ground.
Mill.
Mill, that's right. Couldn't find the word, it was up there somewhere.
Ms. Rockhead, for the record, when did you receive this request? Was it recently?
I received it.
You had to.
We had to, we had a, an issue with Gulfport trying to bring them to the table. But we got them to the table, so we're ready to go.
Well, I think part of the problem was initially they were gonna do an MOU. And extended MOU back and forth complex, that you don't need an MOU, they got an interlokal agreement. There was an issue about whether the county was gonna do it versus bidding it out. And that took up, so just to wrap. And they finally approved it and they did an interlokal agreement.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, order approving labor and equipment needed to assist in construction of a pavilion at Martin Bahanich Memorial Park, also known as Circle Park. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen, order approving professional service agreement between Open Doors Homeless Coalition and Harrison County, Mississippi. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen, order approving Open Doors Homeless Coalition's request for the first draw in the amount of six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the emergency rural assistance program. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Sheriff, did you have anything? Frasier Ladner?
I think I have to work again, I got advertising.
I just had one that was brought to my attention today. And I didn't know if you were aware of this concert. This needs to be spread on the agenda and approved by the board. So for future reference, I called Greg and told him, and he knows this. I had no idea that I'm bringing it to your attention because the sheriff wasn't aware of it. None of us were aware of it, but he knows something like this has to be approved by this board. Saying you might want to tell me.
He didn't.
I already told you.
Uh, the sheriff needs to know about traffic control and security, he doesn't pay any for it and all that.
I knew about it Friday and they, and they're talking to the promoter as of Friday, but I don't, we hadn't had an answer since Friday.
Do they have their own security? Are they paying?
Yeah, I know.
No idea.
Everybody knows. That's why we need to. Okay, Ms. Rockhead, you got anything?
I don't.
Yes, Rebecca.
Okay, y'all went so darn fast, I was eight minutes late and I'm just kinda like, I'm still trying to, um, you know. No, guess not.
I blame an old Chuck, cause he had one lane shut down on Highway nine.
Ms. Tomlin, you got anything?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. First off, there was a, I don't think we did, we were calling the Oriole did on the grant to Harrison County Foundation, where you authorize them to go ahead and receive the funds. And then we were spread it on the minute where the order didn't come out exactly like it needed to be. I was asked the board to clarify its order and see the date.
March first.
March first.
Got the item number.
Yeah, it's item number, well, what I've got is twenty, twenty-one dash zero four two seven, that's the file. So asked the board to clarify that order and make it clear that the board's intent by this order was to permit the, I guess, on the approval of the county administrator, that the funds can be drawn down and dispersed to the foundation of the Coast Foundation and then it'd be spread on the minutes of a later date. Remember the complaint was like they had spent forty-three thousand dollars and couldn't get reimbursed. That was the foundation's own money, they sent the grant money. The board previously, my understanding, the board's intent was to allow the county administrator to say, issue the check to them and then spread it on the minutes after the fact.
Once they, once they submitted their expenses and it's only material, so.
Otherwise, they may have to wait a month before they.
So we have a motion to clarify, uh, March first, item agenda number two-one-dash-the red dash four-two-seven.
I think the language that I was looking for is authorizing the chancellor to disperse the funds once received to the Gulf Coast Community Foundation on receipt of documentation.
That's not, that's opposite of what he just said.
I think it was on the.
But it didn't give me the authority to release the funds, which is all we were trying to clear up.
I was trying to say upon approval of the county administrator, the clerk is authorized to issue. Chief first authorized to issue the check to Gulf Coast Foundation.
And you'll word that.
Thank you, we'll get it clarified.
So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Madam President, with that being said, county administrator does have a request to issue the funds, am I correct? Fifty thousand dollars.
The original fifty thousand started the first drawdown that we submitted and the money has been received, so can we authorize to release that also?
We'll get a separate order.
This'll, no, this'll cover.
Cover, yeah. Got you.
And Mr. Holman, anything else?
Only other thing is I'm not too much glad, unless it's a matter of pending litigation involving the Waltman property. Do you wanna do that executive session?
Yeah, I think so.
Probably the sheriff.
The sheriff.
Pam, you got anything before we go into that session? Okay, so then we have your motion, we're going to close. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Have it. Advertise kind of resource, and this is sponsored by the Legacy Group. And what, basically what it is, he rose on the frontline concert. I think they'll be doing something at the Harris where, you know, just take all the different law enforcement and first responders and do a concert for them and allow them to get it free. So what they do, advertise kind of resources and force them to pay the dollar.
How much?
Seven, seven.
No, it's a Harris great lawn.
Yeah, but they did it at the concert. Wasn't involved.
It was, uh.
Two months ago, it was a country concert.
So we've got a motion to approve county advertising county resources for seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, now we need a motion to go into closed session to discuss the move to executive session.
Motion.
If the board chooses, right, this is a matter of pending litigation, we've been in executive session before.
I don't think there's any issue, I'd move on to go into executive session.
Oh, okay, and I.
I maybe that we get on into executive session? So we can all and talk and discuss.
Maybe still.
I was gonna state what.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Better barbecue.
Okay, we need a motion.
Motion, come out, we'll take it in session.
And a second, any discussion?
Report please from.
During the course of the thing, it's actually more discussed matter of pending litigation involving Mr. Waltman's property. No action was taken.
Okay, we have a motion and second, come out of executive session. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Do we need to amend something else on the AMR?
We may.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, we may, I told, I sent it to them, y'all will let me know when we're gonna look at it.
Yes, sir, I, I sent it back to you, there's just a couple of sentences that.
On the contract or the?
On the, on the ordinance.
No, the ordinance is done.
Oh, okay.
We fixed that, remember I sent an email saying?
Right, right, right.
We didn't think we need to amend your contract and you said you were gonna look at it, so just let us know.
The contract.
May not need to be amended, I, I didn't look at it.
Yeah, I think there's a clause in there too that says that the ordinance pretty much overrides anything that's in the contract. Okay, but I'll, I'll.
Just wanna get it done. Okay, so any other business?
Can I ask one, can I ask one question on the, on the, and this probably directed at Holman is the, the thirty day waiting period week, is that, is that something we gotta do, the thirty day waiting period?
A what, the ordinance?
Yes, sir, does it, does it have to be the thirty day waiting period or?
I would actually looked at it before I got here just to make sure, there's no real, generally what the board does, amend an ordinance, you publish it, third days, have two readings and that's adopted. The way we drew it in adopted as of the day, I think you're safe in proceeding.
Urgency.
Just, just want to, and we'll do.
We'll read it again at the next meeting, we'll put it on there for the second reading when that will be official, but I, I.
So today's was the first, right?
The only issue is the, the criticality of, of what we're facing, where the, the response times are just so long that it's, it's causing, it's causing problems. And the sooner that we can get this program into, into the pipeline, it's gonna make a difference. So even waiting thirty days.
Before. Ordinance as of today is a minute. Proceed on, if it's authorized by the ordinance, proceed on. If we get some contest of the ordinance at the next meeting, which is not gonna happen, you know, we'll deal with it then. There's no real, there's no real requirement to wait thirty days, but, you know, the board has done it and passed. You always like to do it consistently.
Well, we can make them, I can get a motion right away.
It was adopted today.
Okay, so we don't have to wait.
Then we need to do it again, just to make sure.
We adopted the first reading today. And then the second reading will be on the field.
Right, so that, that'll end it. I, what I, if some, I don't want y'all to think, if somebody came up and said, wait a minute, you didn't read it twice before we're gonna contest the ordinance. That's what I would like to prevent, so we're gonna have a second reading just to make sure, cause that's the way it's always been done. That nobody will say, well, you didn't do it this time. In my opinion, the ordinance was amended as of today.
Perfect, thank you, sir, and that means we can do it, they can go ahead and start doing whatever they need to do to accomplish the amendment. Okay.
By, by the fifth, I assume we'll have another reading that answers the question, just for.
Absolutely.
And let me just, and I apologize, I wasn't here last month or last meeting, but this kinda started when the junior college changed their certification program to require associate degrees as opposed to getting it in a year. So I did call Dr. Graham and Julie, she said to get with her, which I will be happy to set up, that they might can do this through their workforce program as opposed to a regular.
Absolutely, and what we would, what I propose.
Difference is.
What I propose is that we even look, go back and look at this and we've discussed this. There's no reason we can't start doing this in, in high school as a vocational thing. They start in a high school, eleventh grade, by eleventh grade they could become an EMT maybe, and by twelfth grade they're, they're doing this stuff to be a, a paramedic. By the time they get graduate and they're eighteen, we've got more paramedics on the field. We've just gotta get creative because it's getting to be a crisis in having our paramedics, paramedics out there.
And, and if I may, speaking of crisis, our fire department is, we're about to reach a crisis with our fire protection in our county. We have houses, I, I know just in District Five, over, over four hundred houses planned and then another four hundred, eight hundred at Traditions plus a VA nursing home. And I understand that we've maxed out with our, our millage, so we, we're, we're at a ceiling where we have not, we can't go anywhere. So I think we need to, to look at a workshop and see, either ask the legislature to increase the millage in the unincorporated area so that we can provide, I mean, we've been depending on volunteers. Y'all volunteer, you can't even get somebody to volunteer to coach a bat.
Well, that's a cap, I'm telling you with the mail, I'm confused. Do we just need to start paying the volunteers and then they'll be employees?
No, 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 that's not, we have a max, we have a ceiling of how much money that, it is three meals. So I'll give you a comparison. The sheriff gets twenty-two million dollars and our fire department gets three million dollars. That is a huge discrepancy in protection of our citizens in the unincorporated.
I understand that, but as opposed to increasing millage, why can't the county just say, increase Pat's budget?
You can do that.
Why can't we do that?
You can, and but right now, from what his budget is right now, his income that's coming in on the revenue side is, we're eating it up, where are you coming because?
Well, can't we take it back somewhere else and give it to Pat?
We'll have to transfer money in from the general.
We could take what we spend in IT a long time, rather than hiring four or five people. I mean, I'm serious.
Ms. Connie's correct, we're getting to a, I, I have stations that I cannot cover because I just can't pay them and I'm, I think a workshop, the suggestion for a workshop, so we can sit down and I can give you the figures, the facts, I can give you information and I can, I can prove the case, if you will, that we've got to, we really need to go up on, on the, on the budget for the fire service.
Well, just tell us how much is what I'm asking.
You start talking about personnel, you start talking about.
That's why I wanna know what he's saying.
What I also like, if you can, print out, get our GIS to print out the county. Show me where you've got the fire station, how many more people are coming, how this is three minutes and that's twelve minutes. I mean, that's really the only way I can envision what we really need. I know that's a tall order, but I think it's necessary.
No, that's not a tall order, that's an easy thing we can do and I can give you the number of runs we're having in certain areas. I can provide you with the information so that you can make a educated decision as to what you do. And, and, and Mr. Ladner's one hundred percent correct. It's, it's not cheap, it's not easy, it's, it's just, but, but we're, we've got issues that we need to address, but.
Hey, you have to start with getting volunteers.
I don't have volunteers anymore. I don't have volunteers anymore.
It's too hard.
And it's, and here's what the problem is, in order to get the rating that we got, the volunteers have to do things that they're, they can't do to keep up with the rating and subsequently, I have to tell the volunteers, you gotta train this much, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, on top of everything else, they can't do it. And the other thing, and quite frankly, I'll tell you another thing that, that we did ourselves, but I, there's no way around it, is when we came out and said that, that a person that drives a vehicle that, and they're working for the county, has to have additional insurance to cover the county, that's in volunteers also. They're, they're representing the county, if they get in that pickup truck, turn on those red lights and they go run into a call, they're a representative of the county. And subsequently, they have to do the same insurance that you re-require of other people. And when I go to them and say, yeah, guy's gonna have to have that insured and this county's gonna have to be, they don't, they don't like that, they don't wanna do that, and then they don't wanna stay at the fire station and just take the truck. There's just so many things today that it's just, we have to go back.
Forget the volunteers. So we just need to know how much you.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's, it's.
I gave you that one time, maybe it was the amount that if we were to staff.
He did in the last budget.
I'd fully staff those fire stations.
Make them.
I don't remember with that.
I probably was anomalous, something dispersed.
But let me, let me say this to you, and when we, if, if you allow us to have the workshop, I can give you those numbers and I can tell you, but I can, I can tell you the increase of calls that we service, calls for service, even in, they'll show you, the call for service in Harrison County has just ballooned, it's just gone. There's not a night that goes by that we're not doing eight, ten calls overnight. And you can't ask the volunteers to, to be making those calls and you can't. And fire protection, if you're gonna do it right, it's gonna cost us some, some more money, so. But I would love to do a workshop so that I can give you facts and figures and, and give you the, the important information that you need to make, help you make a decision on what to do.
I think that would stay, I think a full-time person, what, eight hours?
Twenty-four hours.
That is three, they work three point four hours.
So each, each fire station has been staffed twenty-four hours?
When I can get personnel to cover them.
One person?
Yes, sir. When I can get personnel to cover them.
What does that cost us?
Well, the problem with that is it works, it makes work days, but then you gotta call them in cause you don't have enough people working, and you call them in, then they're overtime.
See, I'm, I'm using a lot of vol, not volunteers, I'm using a lot of part-time, which reduces the amount of money that I'm having to pay and I, and I wanna do that.
You can't get them to work.
But I, but it's hard to get the part-time guy, I've got guys that are working forty-eight hours, it's a regular job. They're working one day at another fire department, they're working one day for us and then they're off a day. And that's every week. It takes a toll on them and their families. I'm trying to, you know, I try to use as many volunteer, not volunteer, part-time people as I can because it costs us less, but their schedule is whenever they wanna, it's not much difference than having a volunteer. And a volunteer could come when he wants to or doesn't come when he wants to.
Are you saying on call, actually?
Part-time.
Are you telling me that each one of those volunteer, excuse me, each one of those fire stations we got has a person at that fire station twenty-four hours a day?
Not all.
No, sir, not all of them, out of the fourteen, we probably have five that are consistent, that have twenty-four hour personnel, six twenty-four hour personnel.
Two o'clock in the morning, there's a guy sitting there, phone ringing.
Yes, sir.
But, and he can't get much if he can't get volunteers to help him.
He's depending on those other stations.
Yeah, he keeps his other stations, he's got the other stations twenty-four seven.
You know.
Look at the distance you're talking about.
Yeah, but if there's a serious, if you're fully involved and you have to come from four other stations, how in the world can you put it out?
You don't.
We don't put it out the way we like to, we put it out because we're gonna get people. Every fire that we have now, we call CRTC, the air base, that we, they have agreed to assist us, so they're bringing personnel to help us. So we know every time we got three more people coming, but that's always after we've got there, we've made the initial attack on it and we've tried to do what we can to do it. We are just to the point where honestly, if we're gonna call ourselves a fire department, we have to get it real and do what we have to do to staff it.
And we're an urbanized county.
Well, I'm kinda shocked to hear that we don't have it fully staffed every station.
Don't have, we don't.
Never have had.
My friends are fire chief of Mandeville and they're, they're all fully staffed. They have three, three shifts, three on every twenty-four.
Is it the county?
Oh, city of Mandeville, but still, I was just saying. Well, I understand they're different, but that makes me not wanna live in, nor the county if that's the case.
What I'm gonna propose. What I'm gonna propose to you is that when I come to you, if you allow us to have a workshop, I'm gonna bring you where we're at today, what we're doing today, what other areas of our size and, and, and our di- dynamics, uh, demographics.
Yeah.
What they're doing, and I'm gonna lay it on the table and let you see exactly what it is. I'll also show you what it, what the requirement from NFPA should be as far as what we should be doing for our size. Unfortunately, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you right out front, it's gonna be more money than you're spending today. I mean, you look, I think the road department's what, eight million dollar? On the road department budget versus what we're doing and they're not a twenty-four hour operation. It's just gonna take us more money. That's the only thing we're gonna be able to do.
I think.
It's been coming, it's been sort of urgent.
Look at this population.
Yes, sir.
This is urgent. Certain areas probably requiring more staff than others. I mean, you get certain districts out there, you don't have the houses. But certain, I would assume certain fire stations like, uh,
Yeah, can you tell us where?
The old west, uh, have a more concentrated area in there.
Absolutely.
That you might would staff first.
That's what I was thinking.
And we're doing that today. I can assure you that we're looking at the areas that we, we, we go by call. Now that we're, we, we've made our computer system so that we know how many calls we're making in which district. I can give you the numbers and I can tell you right now that I'm not gonna staff Station Ten, which is up by Ramsey Road and Vethel Road, the same way that I'm gonna staff Station Four, which is at I-ten and County Farm Road.
Yeah.
We just don't do that. But we've got some key areas that I need to staff that we're not staffing because I don't have the personnel to do it with.
And break that down for us.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know you want overall budget, but break down.
I will.
What you need, where. We might do a little bit at a time, I guess.
And I want to comment. I think we go to too many car accidents. If a car accident happens and y'all show up and it's a fender bender, I've seen fire trucks when it's not emergent. I just would like to know those numbers, too. I understand you have paramedics, but I think it's too often we are sending out fire trucks when it's not.
City is the one that has that.
So it's not us?
I don't think so.
We don't, we don't do that?
No, 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 no. Yes, we do, but let me give you an argument for that.
I mean, I know y'all have lives and I know heart attacks and y'all are there before AMR often and I get, and even for the cops, I've been there when y'all get there before the cops. But I don't think it's necessary, all of it.
But, Miss Rebecca, this, let me say this to you. That doesn't change anything because what happens is I have that firefighter still sitting in that station. It does not cost any more for him. Like, he's still there, he's not productive.
No, I know, but what if there's a fire call? And he's over here and he's not at the station to get the big truck.
Yes, ma'am. No, he goes in the big truck. That's why people say, why do you bring the big truck to this call?
Okay.
Because that truck is gonna go, it's not.
He's got the hoses.
It's gonna go to that wreck, but it's gonna go from that wreck to that fire and it's ready to go. So it's about protect, productivity. I can send those guys out there and they can do nothing except for the great big things, or they can be out there doing everything and still do what they need to do.
Okay.
So from a productivity standpoint, that doesn't make a difference. Staffing that station, if I don't have anybody in that station, that's where my problem is. Because I leave a hole, I leave a gap. Let's take an example.
Oh, I get it.
The, let's take an example in Gulfport or Biloxi, if one of those fire stations is not covered, eight minutes later, there's another station that's gonna be there. Fifteen minutes later, maybe in my situation, that truck's gonna get there because of the distance and.
Right.
And time. So I appreciate you having this discussion with me. I need to get you some real information. I will be back to you if you ask me to do a, um, workshop. I will certainly put that stuff together for you and present it to you.
We can do it, just tell us how much time you need.
I mentioned it just now.
Okay, I will, I will take care of getting that.
And then let me know when you wanna do the workshop.
And thank you, and thank you for, thank you for working with AMR on this because it's really important.
Yeah, we don't.
Our responsibilities are so.
Now, if we can get the educational part in it to work with us, I think that's, that's the key.
That's why I'm looking at it, to write it.
Absolutely. Thank y'all very much.
Probably, probably bring maybe, maybe Mr., maybe at the legislature, the House, bring that up, the ed- educational tool part.
Well, if Dr. Graham.
As a vocational.
You're talking about.
Yeah, the high school boot tech to get the EMT.
Getting trained.
Uh-huh.
In the high school as a boot tech course. So that by the time they graduate.
That's one of the weaknesses, to be honest with you, about students today is lack of vocation.
Absolutely.
Emphasize college stuff to, to the point where we're not getting a vocation in that.
Plumber makes as much as, more than a doctor today because he doesn't have to pay as much insurance for his plant.
Right, it's hard to find one.
I know, I, I, my prosthetic thing had to be pumped or whatever they call it, or my system, whatever. My aeration.
Okay, I got one more thing I forgot to bring up to y'all, just was added on my email. There, you know, the city's doing that schooner pier project. It's a boardwalk, the concrete boardwalk that we voted on, I think.
Uh, like, that we, I was thinking.
You're talking about the one that extends over the beach, doesn't stop the flow of sand.
Yeah, he got the grant money for it, so it maybe it's on our April agenda, but anyway. Part of that project is if they take that vegetation up in front of Schooner Pier, which y'all have to do to get the boardwalk down there, they've gotta replenish it somewhere else. They have to replace it. So I was just gonna suggest to get Richard to figure out where we might need some damage, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But I may, I guess we didn't vote on it, but I'm assuming it'll be on April's agenda then, huh? Yeah, he's got a experiment he wants to try, just so you know. He's coming out with like a lip on a concrete boardwalk.
But there's no blowing sand there.
I know. So I'm sure.
So I'm sure it's gonna work.
But he's gonna try it. Okay.
Can we put it down there? There's a spot in Long Beach where it blows like nobody's business. Is it right past, I used to live there and that was worse.
That's some of the places down there where it blow.
It was where they planted the, the trees and everything, pine trees, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it, are they still there?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if I paid. The dunes are real, real tall, but I think Long Beach probably and past Chris Chan.
I don't think the mayor of Biloxi's gonna give us the grant money.
I don't think he's, it's still a man.
Could be wrong, but I don't see that happening.
Okay, I was just saying.
You need some grant money for that?
Yes.
We need some grant money now. That, that is what I.
Okay, is anything else? We got any more business before this adjournment? And in that case, I'll take a motion to adjourn.